Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July meeting of the Planning Commission for Paulding County. This time, if you have any audible devices, please turn them off or to silence so they don't interrupt the proceedings. Paulding County Planning Commission serves as a recommending body to the Board of Commissioners and to the City of Hiram when there's agenda items on it relevant to that jurisdiction. Today, there's only one agenda item that I read, and it is Paulding County's, therefore, any decision made here will be a recommendation to the Board of Commissioner to their night, their meeting tonight at 7:00 PM. Is that correct, or just make sure I got the right times?
That is correct.
Okay. So, when we begin discussing the agenda item, the side speaking on behalf of the application has 15 minutes to present. They may utilize all of that time or conserve some for rebuttal. Of that same 15 minutes, anybody else wishing to speak on behalf of the application will have to take part of that time. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to that application has 15 minutes of cumulative time as well. Any questions to either side from the Board of Commissioners or the Planning Commission do not count against their time. I'm going to ask now, we're going to dispense with the reading of participation in a public meeting. Those procedures are available at the table in the back of the room. And at this time, I'll ask the Planning Commission if you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous session of this body, and if you have any questions or concerns or edits. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion with regard to the previous session's minutes. Have a motion to approve from Mr. Steele. Have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Mr. Robinson, are there any other announcements that I failed to mention?
None that I can say. There was some cases that were forwarded to the August meeting. It was twenty-one, twenty dash twenty-one, or twenty twenty-one dash twelve Z, twenty twenty-one fifteen Z, twenty twenty-one sixteen Z, and twenty twenty-one seventeen Z, and they'll be heard in August on the 24th.
Thank you very much. And our first application, would you please introduce them?
Yes, sir. The first application, only application, is twenty twenty-one dash thirteen Z. Application by Elite Engineering requesting to rezone 45.29 acres from R2 suburban residential to low-density quality residential development to build 116 single-family lots. Property is located in Land Lot 1138, District 2, Section 3. It's located on the east side of, or east of Nebo Road and Dallas-Nebo Road intersection. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff recommends approval with eight printed stipulations, and we have not noted any opposition. Advocate's present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, staff, and public. My name is Jonathan Jones. I'm with Elite Engineering. I represent Integrity Development for the proposed subdivision that is to be developed at this location if approved. The property is currently an R2 suburban residential, and it is the property next to Nebo Elementary and directly across from the PRD that Mr. Brock had rezoned earlier this year, diagonal from the Ingalls to give you some bearings on where it's at. It is 45.29 acres, currently owned by Mount Nebo United Methodist Church. The proposed density is 2.56 units per acre. The R2 zoning, if applied for with sewer, would allow a density of 2.9 units per acre, so we're under that threshold, and quite honestly, they have selected the best and most, I guess, powerful zoning for residential development according to the criteria that's based on the low-density quality residential district. So, my client has reviewed the zoning stipulations, and they are in agreement with those. It does meet the requirements set forth in the future land use map. Staff has recommended approval, like Mr. Robinson said, and I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have regarding this application, or use the rest of my time for rebuttal if necessary.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
Due to the high-traffic volume in that area, the proximity to the school and to Clarice Road in that area, would you be willing to contribute 650th a lot to the improvement of traffic in that area of working on the roads there?
I would like to ask Mr. Jones if there's any current plans for improvements at that intersection, and if so, what they might be.
We've had discussions in the past, and we've also been in discussions with the Board of Education about possible turn lane improvements in that area for the Nebo Elementary School, right and left turn lanes, so those type of projects have been discussed previously.
Do you have any plans in the works with regard to that, other than just?
You know, I wouldn't say there's nothing planned, per se, but we could put it in a plan and start programming it, obviously with, you know, funding.
Something definitely needs to be done in that area, either a right turn in, right turn out of the subdivision, or something, because it's pretty frequent fender benders there in front of the school. Also, the site distance is not going to be real good coming from the Dallas-Nebo-Nebo intersection. It's going to be a busy place for Station 10, just because of accidents there. It's, site distance is terrible.
Exactly. I think we know that there's been an issue in the past due to, you know, the traffic, so, you know, that is something, obviously, we could program a project for that.
With development standards that you'll have to apply through plan review, will that be addressed at that time, as far as making the entry point to the subdivision as safe as can be?
Exactly. This will go through the Development Control Committee, and they will apply the standards of roadway design per ASHTO state guidelines, making sure that it meets all the respective criteria in regards to access, access safety, access control.
Would that potentially result in the addition of a deceleration lane and a turn lane?
For the subdivision itself, it would have a, you know, a left turn lane going in and a right turn lane also. That is required for the development regulations. Nebo, I believe, is a collector roadway in this area.
Okay. Mr. Leggett, any further questions?
No, I don't have any further questions right now.
But your question to the developer's still on the table?
Yes, this question is still on the table, as far as contribution per lot.
Yes, sir. I thought that Mr. Jones was probably going to make the statement, and Jody, thank you for asking. The left turn lane and the deceleration that's going to be required, no matter what, is over $190,000 investment. I have not discussed an additional funding with a developer. If that's something that is deemed necessary by this board or the Board of Commissioners, then we definitely would entertain it, but there's already going to be a fairly large investment for the left turn and the deceleration and the lift station and the force main that's going to have to be put in, which will be a regional lift station located on the northeast corner of this property. And so, a combination of those items is going to be well over a half million dollars and possibly more, like $625,000 for 116 lots. An additional, I know it seems like a low amount, $650,000, but it's just, it's going to stack up to where it's going to make this project not financially feasible. So, at this time, we would like to adhere to either the requirement for a left turn and deceleration lane and/or a donation to the $650,000. So, if we're required to put the left turn in and the deceleration, which it sounds like is probably a requirement, and usually they do require it, my client would probably rather spend that money doing that and not have to be, per se, double-dipped on the DOT side.
Well, the problem is, the short amount of distance, you're talking probably less than 100 to 150 feet, that you're going to have these three entrances, the entrance to the school, that's the one they go into most of the time. Then you've got Clarice Road that has heavy traffic, and then you've got Nebo Road, which is unbelievable in the morning and afternoon traffic times. It's never empty of cars. It's a constant flow all day long, but it's going to be a serious traffic problem being that close, all those roads that close together. So, I believe that should be necessary to make that contribution, to have all three of those roads made safe where people can get in and out of. It's hard to get out of them now.
Right, yeah. I totally understand. The left turn lane will, and the deceleration lane, will allow people to enter into this particular development in a safe standard. As it relates to how that affects the right turn and left turn into the school, I'm not 100% sure, because I haven't, obviously, had time to overlay the two and see how they're, they're going to, I guess, work or coordinate one another. I also know that we're required to donate 100-foot from center line, if I'm not mistaken, according to zoning steps, of right-of-way, which will allow for a lot of improvements, and that also is a, another financial impact is, you know, I think that'll probably be 40-foot of frontage all the way along that front donated, so, you know, it's, it's already a significant DOT impact financially on this project. You know, I, that's, that's, that's where, unfortunately, that's where I have to stand as it relates to that.
I still want to make that a stipulation, if everybody agrees to it.
You can make that motion.
I will make a motion at the time.
And if it passes, it passes. I know there was a question also with regard to sewer availability. I was under one impression, but it sounds like I might have been mistaken. Is there sewer available at this, for the site?
The sewer will be available at the site by the way of installation of a regional lift station that will pump across the street to an existing regional lift station, and then ultimately, it'll go, and its current intention is to go to another project that I'm working on that will end up going to the Sweetwater Basin.
Did you have any questions regarding that?
Can that basin hold all this? The Sweetwater Basin, can it hold all this that we're looking at with the future development you're talking about?
Well, the staff from Water and Sewer is, I've worked with them intentionally to direct the sewer to the Sweetwater Basin. To my understanding, and Ms. Laurie can answer this probably more intelligently than I, but Cobb County has an outfall that is sitting and waiting for our sewage to go to it by an intergovernmental agreement that was created in 2007. So, to my knowledge, as long as we can get the infrastructure to go to that location, it shouldn't be a problem capacity or otherwise. The other development that I'm working on is an existing PRD, and I believe the intent is to run a trunk line from Laird Road all the way to Nebo Road with that system, and then the sewage that's already coming from this facility, this location, along with the sewer that will be added in the proposed lift station, will all now be directed to Cobb County where it was intended to go, where the master study required it to go, rather than, it currently goes to Copper Mine, which is, in all honesty, not where it's intended to go. So, I'll spit, I'll let Ms. Ashmore tell her side.
But none of that infrastructure exists now, is that correct?
The lift station that Charles Brock put in in the force main that goes all the way to Copper Mine is in place.
Sure.
Our lift station would be put in and pumped across to his lift station, and then the sum of the two lift station sewage would continue its path, but rather than go to Copper Mine, it'll be turned and go into the south, the Sweetwater Basin.
But that's a four-inch line, so...
It's an eight-inch force main.
We'll have Ms. Ashmore come up shortly and address that. Are there, before you sit down, Jonathan, are there any other questions from the Planning Commission? Ellis?
The preliminary plat that you submitted, that drive to the project, how far is that from, I know all this can change, but how far is that from Dallas-Nebo and Nebo in linear feet? I mean, is there a reason it's down that far toward the school?
It is...
I don't think stipulation is placing it 660 feet from that intersection.
Yeah, the, yeah, it's being pushed away from the intersection intentionally. I don't, honestly, I can't...
I mean, that looks like it. I mean, I didn't go over and measure it, or didn't have a scale for this plat, because it wouldn't be accurate on a photograph copy, but it looks like the entrance would be better in the convex of the curve. That way, you have site distance both ways instead of down there. I mean, Mr. Leggett is correct. You've got three different, now you're going to have three different roads right there in close proximity. That's going to be kind of a quadmire of a problem there.
Yeah, from our standpoint, shifting the drive down to in-between lots 49 and 50 works great for us, so long as I think we can meet DOT's staff recommendations or stipulation that we're, I think, 600 feet from the intersection. Is that right, Mr. Steele?
660.
660, and that's because I think that's the standard for any intersection in Paulding County. So, as long as we can meet that and pacify their needs, we're, the entrance is not relevant to us. As long as we get an entrance, we honestly don't care where it's at. And I would agree with you, Mr. Ashton, that in the, in the center of that radius would make the most sense. We had it shifted as far away from that intersection as possible, but, and it probably would make more sense to shift it towards the intersection so that our left turn lane could work in conjunction with the school's left and right turn lanes, and they maybe not bleed over each other. Mr. Jones may want to add live to that, but I think it does make sense, and we're amenable to the modification, the entrance location, absolutely.
So, you think it may be 660 feet?
Well, I can, I can roughly scale right now. It's probably 600 feet to the, to our property line, but there's a smaller tract of land.
Let's see if I can pull that back up.
There's a smaller tract of land between us and the intersection, so, you know, we're probably sitting at about 1,000 feet, if I had to guess. I don't, I don't know exactly.
There's an entrance into the proposed PRD that is, that would make it approximately close from Land Lot 45, so we'd still be having the intersection problem there, that close to the main intersection, Nebo.
Yeah, there's a curb cut on another piece of property there, when they improved the intersection there, Dallas-Nebo and Nebo.
Yeah, and the location, just so you know, for this, I believe, is based on the curb cut that's there for the church as well, but like I said, entrance location is, we're amenable to whatever DOT feels, feels best, it serves the community, the public, and everybody.
I'll ask you back up shortly. Any other questions to Mr. Jones?
I noticed you have 116 lots and one entrance and one exit, same. That's going to be a lot of cars coming in and out at that one spot that Roger's talking about.
Well, two entrances would probably create even more cumbersome, but Paulding County's regulations allows up to 250 units on one entrance, so I've done a lot of developments in Paulding that have lots more, lots than 116. I'm not disagreeing that that's a lot coming out of one entry point. Unfortunately, if we created a secondary entry point, that might complicate the traffic situation out there, rather than help it. I know that sounds crazy, but it really might, because you would end up with two entry and two exit points, and I don't, I don't, you couldn't provide a left turn lane for both, and your deceleration lane would have to cross from one to the other, which would potentially create a situation where people being forced out of one entrance and running into people trying to get into the second entrance. So, Mr. Jones can talk more intelligently than I can about what that really means, but 116 lots on a subdivision is pretty typical for Paulding, frankly.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Is, who's going to be responsible for maintaining the lift stations?
The lift station ultimately will be built and designed to Paulding County standards and will become a Paulding County facility. It was part of the master sewer study that was done, I think it was done in '05 for the 25-year plan. The lift station was shown as a regional lift station, and it will open up sewer for a large portion of that southern part of the county, and frankly, this will probably be the only sewer in the near future that can go to the Sweetwater, will be the basin in this area, because the basin that's over, near Taylor Farm Park, there's still some legalities that they're working on in that atmosphere. This one, for all intents and purposes, once the development goes in on Nebo and it goes into the IBA property, then sewer will be able to go to Sweetwater from this location for as far as developers or county officers want to extend the sewer system. So, it'll really open up this basin, because frankly, this basin, excuse my term, has been dead for sewer for a while, and this is really going to open up the opportunity for where it's going to become more feasible for sewer to become realistic in this location.
Still?
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Your developer willing to tie on the school system to it?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, and we'd be more than willing to make that a voluntary stipulation that will tie on to the school system, and I don't, if he, I forget his name, but if he wants to make the zoning stipulation to where they bring it to us, or we'll even bring a manhole onto their site, if that's what they're willing to do. So, however it needs to be worded is what we're willing to do for the school board.
Right, probably around 13, 14, 12, somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, that area. It'll be stubbed out, that, yeah, that's exactly right. And whatever works with their elevations, we're more than, more than good with doing that, absolutely.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Price point on your homes are going to be in what range?
They're anticipating starting these in the high twos, but they said that they'll probably, realistically, with material prices and everything, start in the low threes. And it'll, it'll probably be that when this thing's ever built out, it'll be in the mid to high threes. It's intended to be a really nice community at that location. Very good builders involved in this one.
Any other questions from Planning Commission?
To the applicant.
To the applicant. Board of Commissioners, any questions to the applicant?
I have a comment, Jody. Stipulation number one talks about the maintenance plans, and also, all the information here I have talks about the 75-foot buffer along Nebo Road, or along Nebo, for that matter. And, you know, we've got a new plans examiner that Mr. Lippman has hired up. We've had a lot of developers that have just not chosen to put in buffers. So, according to this aerial picture here, there's very little growth there along the road in a 75-foot buffer, so that's, that's what we'd like to see.
Yes, sir, and he's correct. That's kind of where the church, I guess, it had outdoor congregations over the years, and so there's, there's not a lot of trees, but, and Mr. Robinson can probably expand on what I'm saying, but we will be required, that buffer or any other buffer we were to disturb, or any other developer, by regulation, has to plant it back to a buffer standard. And I think that staff probably put that zoning stipulation in here to ensure that we're not just putting lob-lolly pines that's three feet tall, that we're actually putting in something that makes sense. I wish that there was a buffer, because I have been proposing to all of my clients from this point on to have and leave 30 to 50 foot, whatever makes sense, along the right-of-ways, for one, so that you don't have people that are looking and trying to gaze in there and have accidents, but two, it's just better to keep your project contained within itself, so that it's not a, not a harassment to the community, nor to the, to the government for phone calls and stuff. And all of my clients have been totally receptive to that concept, so it won't be a problem. This one, unfortunately, doesn't have a buffer, but we'll plant back to buffer standards. It probably won't happen, though, until the streets are in, because that's typically when you do all your vegetated buffer and plantings. It'll really also depend on the time of the year. You don't want to plant during, you know, May through August, because it'll be very hard. So, whenever it makes sense, we'll get that buffer planted, but, yeah, we're definitely intending to buffer that frontage with a landscape plan and meet the requirement set forth in stipulation one. Yes, sir.
Who are the ones that are building this?
Parent Homes. So, I don't know if you're familiar with Parent Homes. Parent Homes is a, is a private group. It's not a national. They build, I consider, a really good quality. They're not a big box. You know, every builder has a line of plans from, from, you know, Buicks up to Mercedes, but they are intending to do one of their higher products here, and they're going to really push the envelope on a price point, because right now, the price point down in that area is sub-three. That's what, that's what sells, that's what's marketing, that's what's going, but they're probably going to end up starting over that, and I think that'll be good for the community, because I don't, I don't know a lot of stuff that's going on down there, and to start something in around the 300 mark will be a big improvement to that corridor in that area, in my opinion, so.
Can you begin your comparison with a Buick?
Amenities are required, John. What kind of amenities would they propose?
They haven't finalized exactly what, what they're wanting. They're talking about a pool and a cabana. An amenity is required, so most likely, they'll do a pool and cabana, and they may or may not add a top lot to it. The issue you run into is if you're under about 150 units, financially, it can become a burden on the families to support the cost for the maintenance and upkeep, but with these saltwater pools and stuff, it's actually starting to go down, and there's some materials that they put in that are a little bit longer lasting, so you don't have to have as much savings in your HOA budgets. So, I think their intent is to put in a pool and cabana. We haven't identified exactly where it's going to go, and if we shift this entrance over, most likely, it'll go in right wherever we move that entrance.
Which will probably eat some of your lots up, too.
It'll probably, yeah, it'll probably, if, if we don't lose any lots, it'll definitely modify where we put it, and we'll attempt to get them back, but we may not be able to, so.
It looks like it, but sidewalks on both sides is strictly correct.
LDQRD requires both sides of sidewalk, that's right. And a two-foot beautification, is that right, Mr. Robinson?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to go back just a little bit. Under this low-density quality residential development, the actual buffer requirement is 25 feet in the perimeter.
Right.
If we want to increase it to 75, it would take a stipulation amendment, or an additional stipulation.
So, the 25 feet that's shown on the proposed plat is what is consistent with that zoning category?
That's correct.
Which is 25 feet?
Is that 25 foot outside of the picture, is that what?
Yes.
Yes.
Your plan has the proposed 100-foot right-of-way shown on the...
That's correct. It does, yes.
That's what I was, yeah. Board of Commissioners, any other questions?
Your, this property's not bordering that stream on the backside, is it?
It is on the north side, yes, sir.
It is on the north side.
Yes, sir. And that's predominantly where a bulk of the open space is. We lost roughly about 2.7 acres back there on that north side, and the lift station will be located at the lowest point, that's where you put them, right off that state buffer there.
Will there be any green space near that area where you, that you lost?
Which area?
The area you were talking about where you just lost, 2.5 acres?
Yeah, so, if you can look up there, this whole area right here is intended to be buffered out.
Okay.
And like I said, it's, it's a, it's a pretty large piece of the property. It doesn't look to be, but it's over two and a half acres.
Is that whole area intended to be undisturbed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sure.
I can see that.
It, to the north is Mr. Jim Tally's property, so it's the creek that flows through his property and crosses Dallas-Nebo Road.
Goes into Lex One.
That's right. Yeah, I see.
All right. Any other questions to the applicant? Hearing none, we will bring staff around. At this time, let's start with Ms. Ashmore. And again, there were a couple of questions that would address sewer availability to the site, connection to the school, as well as ownership and sewer basin that it would be going to, so. Capacity, I think, was the question.
And I'm going to start by dividing that into two categories. Let's first talk about treatment plant capacity and where it goes. As, as was mentioned, this would allow this pump station to go to Sweetwater. It's in the Sweetwater Basin. Today, the existing pump station pumps to Copper Mine. The, with the extent, we've extended gravity to Laird Road and are working with properties to get that extended beyond, so that those flows don't go to Copper Mine. are working with properties to get that extended beyond, so that those flows don't go to Coppermine, they go to our connection with Cobb County. We have an agreement with Cobb County that allows us to utilize up to 10 million gallons a day of treatment capacity.
Okay.
Okay. Let's talk about, the other part of the capacity is the piping and the pumping. And so this property, we actually, in doing some research, found that this regional lift station was studied, I'm thinking it was back in the early 2000s, to serve this node of the intersection. It was intended to serve the northern side of the Dallas-Niebo, the Niebo Road. And we are, the thing I'll mention is that under our development regs, developer is required to evaluate all downstream and identify downstream impacts. So the analysis of any capacity constraints will be done before construction plan approval.
And that will have impact long-term on the final decisions regarding connectivity to sewer?
Correct.
And feasibility of the project itself?
Yeah.
Any other questions from Ms. Ashmore?
I have a question. All this lift station, being regional, are we participating in the county to size it for the basin, or are we asking developer to size it for the basin for upstream?
Well, we will have those conversations. Let's just say that we are not at that point. We are asking the developer to upsize it for the basin and have not had, I have not had any discussions about participating in the cost.
Any other questions to Ms. Ashmore? Board of commissioners, any questions? Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Again, I think there were questions about the shifting of the intersection and how that might be addressed or considered by Paulding County. And again, I know most of this would take place in the venue of plan review, but if you could speak to that and address the questions?
Certainly. Let's start out, I had about five written down. Let's start out with the right-of-way request. In this section of Niebo Road, it shows 80-foot of right-of-way, so essentially, there was 40 feet on one side, 40 feet on the other. So the right-of-way request is for an additional 10 feet on this side. So that's that. The trips per day for this development, the Institute of Transportation Engineers have a booklet manual called the Trip Generation Manual, and that manual basically has different land uses, such as houses, single-family houses, condominiums, grocery stores, malls, and it provides studies that have been taken all across the US, some places in Georgia, and it has basically trip generation rates for these various uses. So there's, when it comes to single-family homes, there's been a multitude of studies done all across the US, and they've determined, at this point in time, it changes a little bit per addition of these manuals, but roughly 9.5 trips per household are from a single family they generate. So in this case, 116 homes, you can do the math, there'll be roughly 1,000 trips a day. Most trips obviously happen during the AM and PM peak hour. People going to work, dropping their kids off to school. PM, people coming home at night. So those are typically your busy times, typically one trip in the morning, one trip in the afternoon. The development regulations, Jonathan Jones had basically brought up the fact that 250 homes is the threshold for having an additional access, or we also allow a boulevard section where you would have two lanes going in and two lanes going out. That's one option, too, other than having a second access. When it comes to accesses, you do try to minimize the number of accesses per development, just due to access control. The more accesses you have along the stretch of roadway itself, that's just more areas where you could have a potential conflict with vehicles. So what you're trying to do, you're not trying to minimize your access, but you're trying to basically stop any, prevent any crashes from happening. So the less accesses you have, typically, the less crashes you have. Similar to full-access intersections, you know, lately, the big thing has been to have roundabouts. What a roundabout does, it still gives you access to go around a particular location. However, it minimizes your conflict points. Instead of 32, it brings it down to eight. So again, that's what engineers, especially traffic engineers, look for, are ways to, you know, basically minimize conflict areas. Collector spacing. Niebo Road is considered a collector roadway. Dallas-Niebo Road is also considered a collector roadway. Collectors, basically, they serve a higher functional classification, or I would say, higher speeds typically, a little bit more through movement type traffic, whereas a local road, such as Clary's, Sam Alexander, typically is people leaving their driveway, you know, getting onto a road and then going to wherever they go. So there's local roads, collector roadways, and then arterials. Arterials are something like Dallas-Aquithrough Highway, East Paulding Drive. They serve, again, a higher, even a higher level of transit, basically getting people from one part of the county to the other or into another county. So the reason spacing is important for these roadways, special collectors, you want to have sufficient area, so one intersection is not negatively impacting an adjacent intersection. It's more important, especially for intersection spacing, when it comes to arterials and collectors versus local roadways, specifically just because the speeds and also the amount of traffic that are on local roads versus collectors and arterials. I think that's it. Is there any more?
And the actual positioning of the entry point to the subdivision, assuming that this moves forward, would actually be determined, that actual locality would be determined at plan review, based on your design standards and what best fits for the safety of the roadway itself, correct?
Exactly, correct.
In addition to requirements of turn lanes, deceleration lanes?
Right. The development regulations, they require turn lanes, left turn going in.
And you don't look at it just exclusively from the point of view of that subdivision, but also the other entry points to the roadway that are nearby or adjacent?
Exactly. So in this case, where it specified, one of the stipulations was 660, you wanted to keep it 660 from Dallas-Niebo, but we'll also look at how it lines up to Clary's and also the school entrance also. We'll look at site distance, stopping site distance, you know, intersection site distance, intersection site distance to your left, intersection site distance to your right, all the different facets that make up a roadway intersection and the operation.
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
I have a question.
Mr. Stu?
I want to go back to Mr. Leggett asking about the 650 per lot. Developer's representative says he's not sure he would do that, or not do it in addition to also doing your Acel-D cells and left turn lanes. You guys will look at what's safe. If we were to, if they agreed to the 650, that equates to about $75,000. What would that extra 75, what else is there could be done to make things safe in the area that the Acel-D cells and the turn lanes aren't already doing?
Right. I think in this case, due to the proximity of the school to the subdivision, you would look at ways to help flow traffic through this area. Right now, there's no left turn lane going into the school or a right turn lane going into school. I know at certain times, maybe not this last school year because of COVID, but previously, I know we've had complaints about, especially during the AM peak hour, traffic basically backing up from the school onto the roadway. So we would look at ways to eliminate that backup of it.
Would you be looking for their money to build that to fix the school issue?
No, I would say, obviously, that's not going to even come close to covering. It would basically be...
And that's why he's offering to, he would rather pay the 650 than 75 than build a turn lane.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's, you know, it's going to be four times as much, obviously.
Right.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones?
What would be the alternative, other than something like a roundabout in that area? I know a roundabout would probably alleviate a lot of that problem, but I know there's a large cost associated with a roundabout.
Exactly. I think roundabouts work well, it's just the cost. Typically, on the projects that we've performed, the lowest I've seen is about $1.1 million for construction funding, and that doesn't even cover the engineering and right-of-way to accommodate that. Also, too, with roundabouts, you look at the amount of traffic that's going into it. Typically, I believe, the state standard is you want at least, or better, a 90-10 split, which is basically, you don't want, you want at least 10% of side street traffic, 90% through movement traffic. If not, it doesn't really work well. So you need to have at least that. So you need to do a study to see it's warranted. In this case, I don't know if it would be warranted or not, I haven't looked at it sufficiently, when we're on staff, but...
Would you do like Villa Rick and draw some lines on the road?
Well, I will just say, you know, we've had, I've seen plans proposed by developers with this striping and whatever, but you typically need some type of elevation difference to really slow people down.
An obstacle.
If striping worked, we would do that, but, you know, I would love to spend way less than $1.1 million on construction, I can tell you that for a roundabout.
Well, I usually harp that, you know, what our job here is, is to determine whether or not a proposed use fits with what the future land use map comprehensive plan says. But when you get into the health and well-being of the community, I think all the questions we've had here and raised here are relevant to the discussion, and I think it was a good conversation. At this, I don't have anything further, but if any of my colleagues do, please go ahead and ask questions. Otherwise, we're going to take a vote.
Can we go back to?
Mr. Jones, the other Mr. Jones?
You have to ask questions, please.
Sorry.
For his rebuttal, because we've added one, but we're going to have one.
We're going to have one.
He may or may not want to.
Yes, sir.
So that's my question to you, Mr. Jones. We're going to probably have a question for 650. You guys willing to do it?
Okay.
I also have a question for Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
On the lift station.
Yes, sir.
Is that something that the developer's going to put in? Is that, the county's not going to share expenses on it? Okay.
No, sir. It's a regional lift station, and the last one I put in was in Loganville. We budgeted like 426, and it ended up being 516. That doesn't include the Forest Main, so it'll be a $600,000 facility at a minimum when you add those two items.
Yeah, I figured it was more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, price of duck line pipe is pretty stupid right now.
Yep.
So if you can even get it, I mean, we're waiting two or three months to get duck line pipe, so. But yeah, it's not the intent
All right, good.
by the county to fund it.
Okay.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Would you all be willing to increase the width of the buffer on Niebo Road? As Mr. Robinson said, the standard says 25 feet. Would you be amenable to increasing that width of that buffer along Niebo Road?
Yeah, we're donating 20-foot of frontage, and it's a 25-foot buffer. I think that we'd be amenable to a voluntary stipulation of 50-foot along that frontage, which, to my knowledge, might be the most that's ever been dedicated voluntarily.
What's your depth of your lots right there?
They're pretty shallow. It'll require me to do a modification, shift the road that's paralleling Niebo further into the property, but...
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, there is a motion to be made for application 2021-13-Z with possible consideration of amendments, so please specify those amendments whenever you call them out and address the eight already listed stipulations.
Make a motion. We approve with the eight stipulations already written with the addition of number nine, would be a contribution of $650 per lot escrow for the purpose of road safety improvement. Number 10, contribution of sewer availability to Niebo Elementary School. And number 11, 50-foot donation of road frontage along Niebo Road.
Okay, I have a motion made by Mr. Leggett with eight listed stipulations.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I get a clarification?
We just need a clarification on the last stipulation, number 11.
For the buffer?
The 50-foot.
It's for landscape.
To expand the buffer from the required 25 feet to 50 feet?
Yes.
Just for clarity, that's buffer and not right-of-way dedication or donation?
Correct.
Okay. And Mr. Aston, is that what you're seconding as well?
Yes.
All right. All in favor? Motion passes 6-0 and 1. Thank you very much for participating in that discussion, everybody. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move it.
A motion to adjourn from Mr. Aston. I have a second from Mr. Steele, all in favor. Motion passes 6-0 and 1. Everybody else have a blessed day.